The 21st meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. Tonight's meeting is a special meeting of the Albuquerque City Council. Councilor Bennett is excused this evening. All other council members are present. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. And during that moment of silence, please keep in our loss and our prayers, State Representative Larry Laranaga and his family. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilor Davis.
(Pleasure) Thank you, Mr. President. (Pleasure) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Davis. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass with the council staff at the signup table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. And we want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under the only item on the agenda this evening, and that is final actions. And this is myself and Councilor Davis. Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to work with all the council and everybody on this. As we all know, O-41 approves a project involving Netflix Studios pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and various city ordinances. This is one of the biggest economic development deals in New Mexico history, Mr. President. I'm proud to sponsor it with you, and I've been proud to work with the administration and the governor's office and with our other councilors and our staff on this as well. And so I would move a due pass on O-41.
We have a motion and a second for a due pass of O-41. At this time, we have, I think, eight or nine individuals signed up to speak, but we're going to go to staff first. And we will open that up with Sarita Nayer, followed by Cynthia Hadamio, followed by Deidre Firth, and Alicia Keys. Ms. Nayer, go and proceed.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez, members of the council. I just really wanted to kick off the administration's presentation by saying thank you for working with us on this deal and for really kind of moving your schedules around to have, to take such quick action on this from both the mayor and me. We're really appreciative. I think as we start to do more of these deals with sort of international companies, hopefully this is the first of many deals of this magnitude that they require a couple of things that are unusual, a super high level of confidentiality, as well as a speed that none of us are really used to moving at. So we really appreciate the speed that council took in entertaining this project. This really hits all the six criteria of our economic development incentives that we put out earlier this year. It leverages our core assets. It's place-based out there on Mesa del Sol where we could really use a little injection of energy. It focuses on a high-growth specialty, the film industry, that we've spent years developing here. And it has a positive ROI, creating economic-based jobs and building on the strength of our homegrown companies. We've had some great discussions over the past few days about what these jobs really mean, and the presenters will speak a little bit about that. But I did want to bring attention to one thing, which is that it took about 16 years to build the pipeline of talent that we have in New Mexico for the film industry to support a business like this. And it's going to take some more years of continuing to fill the pipeline so we can see those jobs continue to move up in the production cycle, to become higher-paid, to become more meaningful, more on the content and above-the-line side. So we are really committed to working with Netflix and with you all to make sure that we continue to train and educate the kind of workforce that can get those high-end jobs that will undoubtedly be created by this project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Cynthia Hadamio, our Director of Economic Development.
Ms. Hadamio, go and proceed.
Thank you, Council President Ken Sanchez, Councilor Davis, and thank you to the entire council for moving quickly to schedule this very special meeting. Netflix, the world's leading internet entertainment service, is about to purchase its first-ever U.S. production studio in Albuquerque. We're all excited about that. And having a captive-owned studio in Albuquerque will ensure a higher, steadier supply of productions from the world's largest producer of content. The new Albuquerque hub will serve as a home to Netflix's original series and films and will give them more options for filming new series and films. Netflix is already shooting three different series in New Mexico, and there will be more to come. We believe this partnership is an economic imperative, meeting our departments and the administration's criteria for LITA projects. Number-one criteria: leveraging our core assets, as our chief administrative officer mentioned. This focuses on high-growth specialties. It supports a focused and high-ROI project, creates economic-based jobs, and it implements our place-based strategy. We are here tonight because Netflix is requesting $4.5 million in City of Albuquerque Local Economic Development Act funds to purchase the Albuquerque studio site and facilities in the Mesa del Sol area. The company is also requesting $10 million in state LITA funds. It is important to note that the city and state LITA funding is governed by performance-driven payout parameters, which our deputy director, Firth, will talk about later. The commitment for production spending is the benchmark used in evaluating this project, which will be a commitment of $1 billion injected into New Mexico's economy over the next 10 years. Performance will be measured through direct spend, which is money that Netflix spends on its own productions, and indirect spend, which is money that other film productions spend because they are able to shoot at the Netflix studios. It is important to note that local catering, dry cleaning, hotels, retailers, and even security companies will also see benefits from the increased production that will happen at the studios. And the majority of the spend will occur in the greater Albuquerque area, even if the project is on location or outside of the studio. This doesn't even include the spending on renovations and improvements to the facility that will use local contractors and construction. Through the $1 billion commitment, Netflix will be providing our local crew base with an estimated 1,000 jobs per year. This means that our already experienced crew members will have steady, high-wage work close to their families. Many crew members are technical trade workers who hold positions in set, electric, grip, and construction departments, and typically make a higher average wage than that of similar occupations in other industries. It is also important to note that the film industry builds solid, middle-class jobs, like carpenters, who will earn $25 an hour instead of $18 an hour; painters, who will earn $28 an hour instead of $16 an hour; tailors and dressmakers, who will earn $25 an hour instead of $11 an hour. Albuquerque Studios will therefore likely be a critical location for company productions for many years to come, bringing a critical anchor of the most exciting emerging dynamic in motion picture production to the city of Albuquerque. We are grateful for the support of the council, and we look forward to our partnership with Netflix as they make Albuquerque their home away from home. At this time, I would like to invite Deputy Director Firth to discuss Netflix's commitment to Albuquerque, the project participation agreement, and clawbacks and accountability, which is important to all of us. Thank you, Council President and councilors.
Thank you, Director. Ms. Firth, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and councilors. Under the Local Economic Development Act, the state of New Mexico and its local governments are empowered to offer discretionary incentives to companies that support economic development projects that foster, promote, and enhance local economic development efforts. It is important to note for this project, the evaluation criteria normally addressed in a LITA project around job creation has to be addressed differently due to the nature of the film industry. The focus, evaluation, and performance requirements for this project are structured around the economic investment in both direct and indirect spend. The performance measures and penalties and clawbacks are built around their ability to meet these financial commitments. The city's LITA ordinance requires that economic development projects requesting assistance from the city shall clearly demonstrate the benefits that will accrue to the community and the qualifying entity is making a substantive contribution to the community. Our analysis clearly demonstrates that by fulfilling the commitment for $600 million in direct spend and $400 million in direct and/or indirect spend for a total of $1 billion, the Netflix LITA project will be providing a high degree of benefits to the community and a strong substantive contribution. In regard to the fiscal impact, this project includes an impact analysis that was prepared by the University of New Mexico's Bureau of Business and Economic Research. In this project, we reduced the amount of net new spend that was analyzed for the spreadsheets that you have down to 70% instead of 100% of the $100, of the $1 billion. We wanted it to reflect what they were contractually bound for, not just what might happen additionally. In the BIBA report, the final column of Table 2 shows that if only 70% of the Netflix proposal over the next 10 years, Albuquerque will not only recoup its original investment, but gain an additional $2,295,695 in net tax revenues by the final year of the project period, and that the project will become tax-positive in year six. Additional annual wages will range from $27 to $56 million, and the purchase of local goods and services range from $24 to $49 million. As part of the Local Economic Development Act agreements that the city requires and is required by state statute, the city will be contributing its $4.5 million and act as fiscal agent for the state's $10 million. The project participation agreement states that, in exchange for this assistance, Netflix must undertake and complete a certain project, defined as follows: The acquisition and improvement of the Albuquerque Studios located at Mesa del Sol, consisting of approximately 28 acres of land and multiple buildings. Occupy and operate the facility to serve as a production base for various film, television, media productions and related activities for its own content and to lease the facility. The commitment to maintain and operate the facility for a minimum of 10 years. The commitment of $600 million in direct spend monies related to Netflix productions on or before December 2023, and additional $400 million in years 6 through 10. There is a commitment to ensure that the facility generates a minimum of $75 million annually in direct or indirect spend through the Albuquerque Studios facility itself. There's a commitment to include a screen credit with both a state logo on all productions in which a film production tax credit is claimed, and a commitment to include a screen credit with a city logo and acknowledgement to the city in all productions filmed within Albuquerque. As with all of the LITA projects that we bring before the council, there are certain performance clawbacks requirements. So if on December 31, 2023, if at the end of the first five years Netflix's direct spend is less than 90% of the $600 million performance target that is set forth, Netflix will pay a penalty equal to the percentage shortfall multiplied by the cumulative total state LITA funds and city LITA funds distributed at that time. If on December in 2028 Netflix's direct spend or indirect spend is not at least $400 million in addition to the initial $600 million, Netflix will pay a penalty equal to the percentage shortfall multiplied by the cumulative total of the city's LITA funds distributed after Netflix satisfied the $600 million direct spend requirement. There is also a facility closure clawback. Should Netflix cease operations or notify the city of its intent to cease operations, Netflix will pay to the city in cash an amount equal to the percentage specified based on how long they have been in operation. If it is on or before December in 2023, they must repay 100% of the contribution that has been distributed to them. If it's between January 2024 and December 2025, it is 60%. From January 2026 and December 2028, it is 25%. The PPA also specifies the security, performance review, and reporting requirements customary in this type of deals. We appreciate the fact that Netflix was very easy to work with in this process, and we appreciate the fact and support from our colleagues at the state economic development department and our local colleagues at Albuquerque Economic Development as well. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Alicia Keys. Welcome, Ms. Keys.
Thank you, President Sanchez and councilor members. In 2002, the state's film and television taxes and censas were put into place, so it has taken us 16 years to get where we are today, welcoming Netflix to Albuquerque. This deal happened because legislators, administrators, elected officials, and the people of New Mexico and Albuquerque believed in creating a new industry and an economic driver for our community. This deal not only means $1 billion in spend to New Mexico, it means that we will now be calling to our seasoned location managers and asking them if they're ready to step up and be production supervisors. It means we will have PA jobs ready and waiting for students coming out of CNM's crew training program. It means companies like Racks Lumber can continue to employ an extra 10 people to service the $5,000 to $20,000 of business they do with production companies each day. And it means barricade companies like Southwest Safety could potentially add more people to join their already 13 employees that service the $200,000 in business they bring in from film and television each year. On a personal level, for a local girl who chose to move back home after working for Disney in Los Angeles, this feels really good. It feels like I made the right choice to double down in Albuquerque. This morning, I received a call from somebody's grandmother. Her grandson lives in Denver, and he's a caterer, and he's so excited that Netflix is coming and he can finally move back. She called me three times, and I just appreciate that, and it doesn't happen very often. I also had a producer on a non-Netflix show call and ask me for my realtor's number because now they want to buy a house in Albuquerque. This deal is adding to the energy and momentum that we've all felt over the last 10 months. If council approves this project this evening, we expect Netflix to close on the property within the next few weeks. We will immediately start crafting a workforce-training partnership with Netflix, and Netflix will begin their internal assessment of titles and timelines of productions they plan to bring to Albuquerque. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. If there's any questions for the staff, we will do that after the public comment. And we will give each speaker one minute. The bell will ring at 30 seconds indicating you have 30 seconds remaining, and the bell will turn red once the one-minute time limit has come up, indicating your time has expired. The first speaker will be Jim Grabner, followed by Amy Ballard, followed by Mark Roper, followed by Terry Cole, followed by Carlos Garcia. Welcome.
Mr. President, councilors, I am a film instructor at CNM's Film Crew Technician Training Program and a member of IATSE 480. I've been a member of this crew training program for 15 years, and we've been training crew for all the films that have been coming in. And I want to say that in answering the needs of Netflix, we will be able to supply a workforce that is able, willing, and ready.
Thank you. Amy Ballard.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good—
Welcome.
—oh, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, council members. I'm Amy Ballard. I'm an associate dean in the School of Applied Technologies at Central New Mexico Community College and administrator of the film program, and I just want to speak to our excitement about this deal and also our capacity to support the Netflix coming here. So just in terms of what we can provide, we have a 5,000-square-foot production studio with room to grow. We have a 30-seat editing lab, 10 classrooms, prop fabrication space, and state-of-the-art equipment. Since 2010, we've graduated 484 students from our film tech training program, 33 graduates in spring of 2018. We currently have 332 declared majors who are ready to go to work, 10 dynamic, award-winning faculty with years of combined experience. We have an administrative team ready to provide support and great connections with high schools to provide a true pipeline from high school through community college and into the film technician world. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chair. Can I—
Councilor Badego.
Ma'am.
Ms. Ballard?
I'm sorry?
Councilor Badego, I think, has a question or a comment for you?
I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is the production studio that you—
It's at our Advanced Technology Center campus, which is at 4,700 Alameda Boulevard, in the old Motorola fab space. So we've been there for about 10 years now. Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mark Roper, followed by Terry Cole. And once your name has been called, be prepared to speak. Come to the front. Welcome, Mr. Roper.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mark Roper from the New Mexico Economic Development Department. Obviously, I think our $10 million speaks of our support to this project. There's a couple of quick points that I do want to make. This is really fun to talk about, but it's a long game as we know economic development. And this particular property has been on the market for a long time. And the reason I bring that up is that these opportunities come along very rarely. So when they do come along, it's important that we act quickly, as you have, and we thank you very much for taking this quick action tonight. As Deirdre mentioned, we have a very strong PPA in place for this project with good clawbacks in place to make sure it's in— And that was a B after that number of 1, $1 billion in investment in New Mexico. And the last quick point I'll make, any of you heard of those FAANG stocks? You know what they mean? Facebook, Amazon, Netflix, and Google? Two of them are now in New Mexico after you take positive action tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. Terry Cole, followed by Carlos Garcia.
Good evening.
Go and proceed.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Terry Cole, and I'm president/CEO for the Greater Albuquerque Chamber of Commerce. I just couldn't be happier or more delighted to be before you this evening on behalf of my organization and our 3,000 members, asking for your support for this bill as it comes before you tonight. The LITA bill, the LITA money itself is specifically designed for these kinds of projects. We have been working very, very hard in this community, together with many stakeholders, to create a strong film community. And to have this kind of deal come before us in the name of Netflix just takes that film industry to the highest level. And so we are excited about this. We urge your support tonight, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Carlos Garcia, followed by Rick Lamenta, followed by Charlie O'Dowd, followed by Deborah Inman. Welcome.
Council President Sanchez, members of the council, my name is Carlos Garcia. I'm a local businessperson and real estate investor. When I first heard about the Netflix deal, I thought it was a no-brainer and that it would whiz right through the council on your meeting on Monday. But as a citizen and the father of a young child and someone that loves Albuquerque, I really appreciate the extra time and care that you all took to take this under consideration and make sure that our community is protected. As a businessperson, the swift action that you all took with Topgolf and Taskus and now Netflix, I think it just presents such an exciting time to be an Albuquerque resident, and the trickle-down effect to businesses like ours, I think, is going to be tremendous and it's going to be incredible for our city. And I think 2019 is going to be the year of Albuquerque, and it's just a great kickoff and to really showcase what our city can do, and we have so many great things working. Hopefully, this will meet your approval, and we can continue on that track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Rick Lamenta.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Rick Clemente. I'm the CEO of I-25 Studios, the other studio in town. People ask me, are we worried that Netflix is going to put us out of business? Well, my phone has been ringing off the hook, guys. It's not—Netflix is going to run that place more efficiently than you can run an ordinary studio because they own the supply and the demand, and they can coordinate the timing. We're going to be full more than we ever have been. To give you a little perspective, in the last nine years, we've been host to $900 million worth of business. So I wouldn't worry about them hitting a billion in 10 because they're bigger and they're going to be fuller. And I think it's the most positive thing that happened since I moved here from LA to be in the film business here 11 years ago. So thank you all for your participation. We're having a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Clemente, and thank you for making your home right here in Albuquerque. Charlie O'Dowd, followed by Deborah Inman, followed by Tattneminski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. I'm a filmmaker. I've been a filmmaker in New Mexico for 31 years, before there were studios, before there were incentives, and we struggled to get by. There was only a handful of us, but we got by. Economic development. In 31 years, filmmaking has bought me two houses. I renovated my current house, added 1,000 square feet, hiring plumbers, carpenters, electricians, bought cars for me, for my sons, sent a son to college here. I'm a member of the DGA, Directors Guild of America, so I bring a different skill to CNM. After working in the business for so many years, I do now teach with these wonderful folks at CNM. But I bring a different side of things. Grub is in IATSE, I'm in the DGA, we have other people in camera, in various departments. But one of the things we wanted to stress was, we don't just have filmmakers at CNM, we have welders, we have builders, we have carpenters. We have any job there is in the film industry, we can do it. And after 31 years, folks, I've had fun. I've had fun. So thanks for this.
Thank you very much for your time. Next speaker will be Deborah Inman.
President Sanchez and fellow councilors, my name is Deborah Inman. I'm the senior vice president of business development for Albuquerque Economic Development, Inc., and we have had the pleasure of working with a tremendous team on this particular project. And while this may not be what would be considered a typical economic development project for AED, we wholeheartedly believe that it will be a transformative project for our community. A couple of facts about Netflix. They continue to be a major force in the entertainment industry with more than 130 million subscribers around the world, with market share in more than 90 countries. According to the latest Global Internet Phenomena Report by Sandvine, the streaming giant consumes 15%, I repeat, 15% of the world's internet bandwidth. In the U.S., that figure increases to a little over 19%. To put it into perspective, competing services such as Amazon Prime Video and YouTube account for anywhere between 7 and 8%. Netflix is highly regarded as an employer of choice, especially for younger professionals coming up through the tech industry, and according to a recent article. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Tattneminski.
My name is Tad Naminski, and I'm going to be speaking about city of vision. What kind of vision? City of Albuquerque. Any vision. City is 200 years behind any metropolitan city in the United States. At least 200 years. I'm not going to say 300. Well, every leadership, every vision depends on the leadership. Why don't you bring it, take it to your factory here? Why don't you bring it, shoe factory? Why don't you bring it, factories, automotive factory? You get also support, all kinds of support. I work in a machine shop in Chicago, in the factory. I know what it takes to make a much spring, how many operation in big American spring and wire. So then you get support and also employment. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's no vision.
I'd like Counselor Peña to read a statement from Stephen Michael Casada, the chairman of the Bernalillo County Commission, and also played a key role in Breaking Bad as Gomi. And, you know, he's been in the industry for a lot of years and wanted to leave a public comment and statement for the councilors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear councilors and administration, it is with great pleasure that I offer my support for passage of the incentive package for the purchase of the Albuquerque Studios by Netflix. As an entertainer, I understand fully the prestige that accompanies international players such as Netflix. New Mexico made a large investment in the film and television industry in our state with the completion of the studios in 2007. Approval of the tax measure today will be continuing the investment in those who work behind the scenes as well as a valuable showcase for the wonderful on-camera talent in our great state. We have the opportunity to create a home for a leader in the film and camera and television production industry and encourage quality of life and sense of community for those who visit New Mexico as well as those who choose to make this great state their home. Progress of this nature and a company of this stature will continue to put film and television production in New Mexico at the forefront of our nation's entertainment industry. I welcome Netflix to Bernalillo County and to County Commission District 2. And I'm sorry I didn't ask them, I didn't know I was going to read this, so it's in small print, so I'm having a hard time seeing it, so...
I want to thank the chairman of the Bernalillo County Commission and also actor Stephen Michael Casada. And Ernie Cede Baca, the president of the Hispano Chamber of Commerce, is giving out scholarships tonight. They're having their awards banquet and could not be here, but supports Netflix coming to the Duke City and to Albuquerque. At this time, we will open up for questions from this council. If they have any questions for staff... Are there any questions for the staff? Counselor Bregel?
Mr. Chair, I think they answered... I had the question about defining direct and indirect, and I think they defined that. I had, I guess, two more really quick questions. One is the status of the purchase of the production studio. I was just curious about that.
Thank you, Counselor Bregel. We'll invite Ms. Keys down to answer that question.
Alicia Keys?
Thank you.
Welcome back up.
Thank you. They expect the purchase to be done in the next few weeks. They have done the discovery and the title search, so it's just a matter of a few weeks. Thank you for the question.
Okay. And I guess I just was wondering how big that those studios are. What's the square footage? Do you have any idea?
I believe in total, with the mill and the stage space and also the office space, that it's just shy of 300,000. Is that right, Deb? Did we look that up? Yeah. Rick is nodding, yes. I'm going to take I-25's opinion on this.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, and then, thank you.
Go ahead and proceed, Counselor Bregel.
And, you know, I'm going to be, I'm happy to say that I worked on the first soccer fields and the pavilion as a loan planner to the county of Bernalillo, so I'm really happy to see that Mesa del Sol is starting...
The soccer fields of Mesa del Sol.
Yeah. So the question, the last question I have is for the administration, and I just wondered, when Netflix sends the reporting in to the city, is, does that, who reviews that?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Bregel, that comes in initially through the Economic Development Department, and we've actually been talking about how we should bring some more transparency to all of those reports because all of your LITA projects and some of your IRBs are reporting in regularly and we don't ever really talk about it very much, and we should because there are a lot of great stories in those reports. So we're working on a broader project that will include the Netflix deal.
Thank you. And thank you all for answering these questions. There were just things that I was, little details that I saw that I was wondering about, and we're really excited to have you guys here.
Thank you, Counselor Bregel.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Keys, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to have you here and doing this work. We're not blind to the fact that in the last week or so, in particular, as we went through this, that every time we ask a question like that, it takes hours and hours of work for people to pick up the phone and do math and check on things and call somebody around the world at Netflix in Australia to get an answer. But really, it's because you all put the work in to get the numbers and get the team on board that we were able to get this that quickly, and I want to acknowledge it. One piece I do want to just talk about sort of next, what happens next, assuming we pass this tonight, which I think we do. You know, one of the things we talked about was pipeline. And can you tell us a little more about, sort of, there is a provision or an expectation that Netflix is going to work with CNM and F cap program to sort of work that out? Do we know yet what that looks like, as we hear from our CNM folks, and sort of what the city's next steps can be to support that or how that program starts to develop as we, as our workforce starts to look ahead for their next job?
Right. Thank you, Counselor Davis. We have spoken with CNM, and we will sit down with them and also with UNM and look at the current programs, and Netflix will fly out. And we will also study what we did in the past because we did have an educational program that was set up before, which was through our community colleges. And we'll also look at what's going on at the Georgia Academy as that is lauded as one of the better programs. So we are going to have a few growing pains because we're not going to have enough people to work, and we're going to try to solve that as soon as possible. So that starts hopefully tomorrow.
Mr. President, if I could follow...
Go ahead and proceed.
You know, it'd be great, as we move forward on this, to start that conversation and whether it means that we, the city, sit down and we work together to come up with a film industry job fair to tell people how to start getting involved with this. I think we've been having some conversations at the council about how to do that, or whether it's the right time, finally, for the city to start thinking about even a temporary film commission, just look at our industry strengths and what we can do as a city and a community from the experts to help us do that, even at the legislature about raising the ceiling or whatever. I think it's time for us to do that, and it'd be great. It's an opportunity for us to really diversify our economy, and it's a big boost to our creative economy, which we know helps keep our kids here. It helps keep our families here and expand our money in the city of Albuquerque. And so it's exciting, and I'd love to just talk about how we can support and promote that in the community beyond simply incentives for them to get started at Mesa. But thank you for your work.
Thank you. And I think that Counselor Davis, that's a great point. A job fair would be incredible because a lot of people don't understand how to get into the union. I didn't even really understand before I took this job, so it's been a learning process. So yes, we would definitely look into that.
Counselor Bregel.
Mr. Chair, just a follow-up to Counselor Davis's comments. And I guess what I read is that there is some cooperation with CNM, and I think that's really encouraging because that tells me that there are local hiring incentives. And I think that that, you know, having that kind of stated as an intent is really important. And I, you know, I just would like to kind of, maybe you guys want to talk about that CNM partnership or, I don't know if you have developed it yet or not, or what your thinking is?
Ms. Keys? Oh, yes, President Sanchez and Counselor Bregel. We have had very initial talks before the deal was announced on a very confidential level. They didn't know what company was coming in, but they knew potentially that a big production distribution company was coming in. And we've, I just actually spoke with, left a message for Christine today, so we have not had formal talks, but they seem to be all on board.
I wanted to share something. On behalf of Kristin...
Come over to the microphone, please, and state your name for the record.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Kristin Benedict, Dean of Applied Technologies at CNM, and I want to share CNM's support of this project and our ability to scale up and provide the workforce needed for our local community to build a strong and vibrant economy. So thank you. Yes, we do support this project, and we are working hand-in-hand with Netflix.
One more question.
Go ahead and proceed.
So is that for all positions?
All positions. We've looked at the breakdown that was handed out the other day, and we, CNM has the ability to do almost every position that you see on that list.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
From accountants to welders to construction. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Any other questions from this council? Counselor Davis and myself will close. Counselor Davis.
Mr. President, I've spoken enough tonight, so I urge your support.
Thank you, and I'd like to make a couple of comments. First, I would like to say, lights, camera, and action. This is truly exciting news for Albuquerque. We've heard from Netflix that they will be investing $1 billion in the next 10 years. 600 million the first five years and 400 million the last five years. This will put Albuquerque on the world production stage because I think this is just a beginning and a snowball effect of what we are going to see with Netflix coming to Albuquerque. And I know there's talks of other studios also wanting to locate here in Albuquerque. Plus, I'm really pleased to see that Central New Mexico College is doing a really fine job in training the workforce. But I want to thank those individuals that have worked in the film industry that have been here in Albuquerque for many, many years, like Stephen Michael Casada and many of the others that, you know, started on Breaking Bad and many of the other productions here in our community. They've put us on the world stage because of their work and their production with some of the films that they've been involved with. But again, this is going to be some really exciting times for our community. I think Netflix is going to be a great partner to the citizens and the residents of Albuquerque. We are talking 1,000 jobs annually. I believe that number is low. The numbers that they have utilized are very low numbers, and I think those numbers are only going to increase. But again, I'd like to welcome Netflix to Albuquerque and to New Mexico, and I also want to thank Mayor Tim Keller and his staff. The staff was available to answer questions to all the members of this council this past week. You know, we had some questions, they all got answers. I really appreciate Alicia for your work, also Cynthia for your work, and the staff from the state office. They were down here also meeting with our local staff and commissioners for the work that they've done. But again, this is exciting, and at this time, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of this ordinance, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries on an 8-0 vote. It is unanimous, and this meeting now is adjourned. Welcome to Albuquerque, Netflix.